Bellatera, South Division Phase 1 located southwest corner of Solsklaug Road. Epi and Tom Thomas requesting site plan modification to allow for rental of the townhouse units currently in construction on an 83-point parcel having 66 individual located in the FHR medium-high residential district in the core town of Webster.
Good evening. Mike Ritchie, Cost of Engineering here with Tom Thomas and the developer of the development project group. Just to clarify the agenda, and again, Josh, you're interrupting me. I'm not correct. We're not proposing any modifications to the site plan per se. Nothing that was approved by the Town Planning Board in terms of the site development is a change. We're here more or less as good neighbors, part of the community, to discuss with the board the fact that the developer, Tom Thomas, would like to have the flexibility to sell or lease depending on the market that's out there at that time. The subdivision map has been filed, so there are 66 individual tax account parcels that currently exist. They'll be sold if the market warrants it, or they'll remain in the ownership of the Tremad Group until such time that they can be sold. The purpose of this with prices going up and inflation going up and uncertainty in the market, it's Tom's intent to build all these units now and also to recoup a lot of the upfront cost due to the infrastructure costs that he participated in the subdivision. So, you know, because of that, we wanted to come to this board and discuss it with you. I don't know if leasing those units is in any way violating town code. But again, we wanted to discuss with you, which means, you know, we're good neighbors. So with that, we'd be happy to discuss this with you.
Well, we've talked about it a little bit in the past. I've talked to Tom about it, and he's talked to Josh about it too. Apparently, there's issues that conflict a little bit in similar thinking anyways. And I don't know what the opposite side is, what the other thoughts are about it. If you own them all yourself, it's a dedicated road. The infrastructure and infrastructure and everything is town. And you build a place. My understanding is you'd be able to lease it if you want to lease it. And if you've got two of them, or if you've got 10 of them, if you own them, you can lease them. If sales came available, I don't know where the issue would be other than you'd sell it. The only thing I would think then, and I believe it's required, but I think something like that, if some were sold, some were leased. It'd have to be, it should be, you know, homeowners association or something of the form at that point. I mean, I can't picture you own one unit down next door, you decide to put a roof on it and I don't. How do we resolve it, you know?
Right.
Or you own one and I don't. Those are the kinds of things, you know how that goes.
Yeah, and again, you know, I think with it being on an individual building basis, right? We're not talking about a homeowners association that's going to share in the cost of paving a road. But it's more, you know, again, I'm an attorney, so I'm not going to pretend to be one. But I think that's something that Tom could work out in order to comply with many rules and regulations.
But there's other thoughts in there too.
Yeah, so...
Is Donna there? I can't see her.
Yes.
So Donna, are you there? I can't see her.
I'm behind the pole.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Donna.
Hi, Tony.
Maybe she could explain some of the... She said apparently there were some issues at another project we had in town.
Yeah, we are correct in saying that there isn't anything in town code that explicitly prohibits the renting of units. However, I think after an internal meeting of several department heads last week, there's some concerns because the project was approved under the assumption that it was going to be owner-occupied. So, once that rezoning took place and the approval process went down that road, a lot of things happened that wouldn't traditionally occur in a rental-type community. One being that, you know, we've established a park district. The roads are all being built to town standards. Those are things, and everything is proposed to be dedicated back to the town. So, we're not aware of any other situation in town where there are, you know, town-dedicated roads and infrastructure and stormwater on management for a development that is essentially, you know, a mix of rental ownership. So there's several concerns. So, yeah, so basically, we're a little perplexed as to, you know, we certainly appreciate developers' desire for flexibility. However, we've already gone so far down this path that it presents other problems for the town. So, maybe Donna, whoever, you know, if you want to say...
I think Donna's kind of, you know, the meeting, I mean, it helps the board, you know, I mean, it's all in the safety area.
There were a lot of comments that, you know, we've all been talking about what does this mean for the town. There's a lot of stakeholders, not only yourselves, but we have a highway department, and I can't speak for them. They want to know about dedicated roads versus non-dedicated roads.
Donna, excuse me. Take that mic a little closer to you. She's not picking it up.
Closer.
Yeah, really, really close to you.
For everyone's sake, I'm sorry.
Right.
I don't know Donna.
You need to say your name. My name is Donna Comar. I'm the assessor for the town of Webster.
Okay. Pardon me?
Nice to meet you. It's a small world. And likewise here, Mr. Thomas, I don't think everybody would be part of it. So, the highway department has its own perspective. The sewer department would have its perspective. You have the planning, you have the zoning, then there's the assessment, right? There's a lot of perspectives, the town engineer, building permits, and that. From a collective point of view, we were trying to kind of get together and say, well, what is the best path forward for everyone? Unfortunately, I have some history with the town of Webster in that there was a similar project, kind of in their reverse standard. They had already set up all of these lines, and where you're asking to leave the lines in, they had the lines in, and it turned out that, like yourself, they began with expecting to sell them someday. 30 years later, those properties are still, actually 66 properties, just like your own, right? They're all rented. They've never been sold. And along the line, along the lines, there became a problem with, well, you're a hybrid. You're not really set up to be privately sold, a joint and independent assessment parcels. And at the same time, you're renting them all. So you kind of can't have the cake and eat it too, in a sense. And I don't, I'm not suggesting that's what you were trying to do, but that's a problem for the town. So you've already filed a subdivision map that looks familiar to me. There are 66 individual parcels which now, according to the assessment cycle, have 66 parcel identification numbers. I've issued 66 addresses to those. And there's three other parcels which the map indicated to be dedicated to us. I believe that, Josh, those are the parkland parcels, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, to be parkland parcels, they're in the upper-left corner of the, yeah, the three retention pods, yeah? And then one there, either side of the road as it comes in there, is that Bellatera itself?
Yes.
Yeah. And then you have the remaining lands, which is all the other lands for future development. So there's 70 pieces of property here altogether. So there's 70 addresses, there's 70 tax identification numbers. And I will be sending you 70 change notices very soon as the assessment rolls being filed in May. On there, you will also notice there's easements going into the town. We can't speak for the sewer department, but all of those things go into play when a subdivision is set up with the intent to be saleable, which is what you stated originally was your intention. So when properties are saleable, they have all of those features to them. But by contrast, and I thought we might have a screen, but you don't have a screen available. And you can think of Water View at Willow Point, if you can think of Waverly Woods, right? Webster Green. Those are large-track parcels with multiple buildings on them, and they're all set up individual, they're all set up for individual rentals. But it's one tax identification parcel, and the roads are private. Utilities are privately owned and maintained. And that's how we know that they're going to be rentals. So you want to have, you are set up as individual ownership. But at the same time, you want to have the benefits then, and also the responsibility of being the landlord. So there's a problem there from an assessment point of view in that I don't assign addresses to every rental unit in town. And we wouldn't have assigned individual parcel identification numbers to every rental unit. And I want to stop short of calling these apartments, but they are duplexes, as I understand, that you're planning to put up, right? Townhouse-style buildings. But they wouldn't be individually owned. So a lot of things have already been put in motion. And I think if the other departments were here, they would be able to advocate for themselves as to how everything's already gone in motion in a certain direction. You're kind of trying to turn around a speeding locomotive. You can't turn that around on a dime necessarily. So if your desire would be to rent them, it would be my perspective, and I think the collective perspective of the other stakeholders in the town through the other department heads, then go ahead and change your plan. You know, you have that option where there's zoning, and I can't speak for zoning, Josh, so chime in. But you can change your plan so that the roads aren't dedicated, so that there aren't the easements and all that. And I understand, it's easy for me to say, and that has simple meaning to me, it's a short sentence, and it has a whole lot of weighty meaning to you, right? I know there's a lot of weight in that sentence, and I know there's a lot of meaning to it. But to have the hybrid is a very complicated situation from all those perspectives.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
What would be the difference if I owned it or if you owned it? If you bought one for me and you wanted to lease it, what would be the difference? I mean, if all the different town facilities were the same, it wouldn't be any different?
Well, they're set up for private ownership, so all the public hearings and that. Now, kind of stepping on Josh's toes a little bit, but the public hearings that were put forth was presented to the public as a horse of a different color, if I can use a cliche. So it was presented to the public, and all of the conversations that have happened up to this point have been leading up to private ownership, okay? From an assessment point of view, we just don't individually value rental units. That's what you're asking me to do.
Well, no, in other words, if I owned it or you owned it, if you bought one in there and you wanted to lease it, you could allow it to...
Well, then there would be a sale on the property, and I would have some data to use to judge the value, and it would just be like like Providence or Talpers Trail or any other subdivision.
We're planning on being individual owners on every unit. But to build the whole project, I'm planning on doing it myself, you know, just building it. So I would be the owner of each unit, of which I myself. But if you bought one in there and you wanted to lease it, you would have to lease it.
That is true.
Totally true. There's nothing in a town code that says an individually-owned property can't be rented. And if you're going to be the individual owning the property, I don't see any reason why you can't rent your property instead of selling your property. But I understand where you're coming from, because you're going to be putting up buildings and, what is it, four or six units in each building?
Two.
Two units in each building? If you can't sell one, you sold one, but you can't sell the other one, you have the option to rent it as an individual owner. This is different than what we did at Willow Point when Mark Fort came in and they completely restructured the whole thing to one tax account number. He's not asking for that. He's saying, I will leave everything the way it is, but I want the option to be able to rent out the unit. And if he's going to sell you, you've got an HOA, right?
We haven't.
No? Who's going to maintain the property?
It would be the owner, which would be me.
The owner is to maintain the property.
Or...
So, you know, there's where the... If you're going to maintain the property versus the renter maintaining the property, that's a different story. If the renter's going to maintain the property and he's going to let it go to hell, no, you know, that's not good. So I would say, you know, maybe a stipulation would be that any units that you own, you maintain until a time you're sold.
Well, I think, we talked about it a little bit, and I mentioned to Tom about that too. If that's the scenario, and down the road, he starts to sell a couple of them, then I think there'd have to be a stipulation that there would have to be an HOA for them. Because some would be private, you know, you know, tenants moving in, or owners, owners moving in. You should have an HOA.
I think it's a good idea to have an HOA.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
You know what I'm saying? Well, that's what we talked about, but see now, I don't know, I'm missing some of what Donna's saying, right? And I hear what you're saying, but then that...
You hear you're saying that HOA just for the while, it's not...
No. No, I'm saying as long as he owns them, if he plans on keeping them, but let's say five or 10 years from now, a year or two, months from now, he decides to sell one or two of them off. Now you're creating an issue where homeowners are in there, and you get to the situation where who's going to fix the roof? Who's going to mow the lawn? Who's going to get care of the driveway? You know, I want to replace half of my roof, so you live in the other, you say, heck, I don't know. Bottom of my roof's okay, it isn't leaking. Now you've got, what, two different roofs? You need to, you should be, should have an HOA in a situation like that.
That's something we probably missed in the beginning.
Not really.
When you've got two units, I mean, like you said, if the whole thing needs a roof, it already happened, it's got to be done.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know how we're going to go with this thing here.
Well, I can't think of any other rental community where the town owns the utility infrastructure and the town takes dedication to the road.
This is not a rental community. So KYC building you a plan.
They're just exactly where Water View was, and that's my point. Because that's where Water View started, long before my time with the town. I've been here 17 years now. That was long before my time, but that's where they started, and it was exactly the same thing. They set it up that way with all the individual units. The reason they were before you was to erase them because they clearly were committed to a rental situation then. But the difference here is that the roads were never dedicated to the town. There was some undoing of some easements and things for utilities and that.
Yeah, when that got approved, when that got approved over there at Willow Point, I remember specifically asking that question then too. Are these for sale or for rental?
And then for sale.
And it could have gone either way. Some might be for rent, some might be for sale.
No, they were definitely for sale.
Yeah.
Because I had to research that.
That was, that's what was coming at the meeting at the time.
Then he came in, he wanted everything on one.
Yeah.
And they made it a complete rental unit, a rental community. This is not a rental community. This is a privately-owned community. I believe this should end with HOA. But I certainly see no problem in him being able to run out units that he hasn't sold. As long as, you know, you've got an HOA, this can be maintained. This, yeah, it's a dedicated road, dedicated sewer. They are units available for sale. They're not going to be units for rental only.
With all due respect, they're not available for sale until such time as that HOA is structured. And that's exactly where Willow Point left at, half-done, hybrid, which is what became the issue. So the problem with a hybrid is you're not really one, and you're not really the other, so you're not in compliance with anything.
Because they're here in...
I don't call this a...
Does it get in town at any point in time for those third-party parcels?
No. They want to keep them all individual tax accounts.
So it's something that's assured.
Yes.
They'll always see out there as not going to change, but these ones stay the same?
It should be the safest, any subdivision in the town. Dedicated roads, dedicated sewers, everything should be, every, same as every identical subdivision. Oh, yeah, sorry. But our plans are to keep it an actual subdivision.
I think it is correct that it should have had an HOA in the beginning because the issue of who fixes the house or the roof already exists.
I'm in agreement with that.
You know, 100% of that. If both are sold, there's no guarantee that both owners will repair them.
Yeah, I would be well on board.
But it's current existence.
I'd be likely to agree to have my HOA before any unit gets sold.
That would be something we'd have to, because legally, he doesn't have to do that. He doesn't have to have an HOA with two-unit apartments. But in cases like this, yeah, we should have one there, yeah.
Is there anything we can put in place on those, so that they can't bother?
See, I don't, I hear what Donna's saying, but I don't know what the alternative is. Don't take dedication to it. Then what do you do with it? Just leave it as a private road and private everything? And then, so then, let's, I think I'll log here. So let's say we do that, then in three or four years, he decides to do like Willow Point, decides to want to sell some.
Well, it's not what Willow Point did. Willow Point was not going to sell.
What happens in this case, though? It's reversed, basically.
Well, you would have the first-ever rental community with dedicated infrastructure that the rest of the taxpayers are paying for, which is actually part of a private endeavor.
Yeah, no, let's say, let's say the town doesn't take dedication to it, you know, like what you're saying. Make it a project, you know? You own them all, you can rent them all. Each one's still got its own tax account. But then what happens if he wants to sell them?
In my assessor world, if they were to commit to a rental situation, which is what they're describing to you now, that would be removing all the lines, just like Water View did. Remove the lines, put in your private roads, keep and maintain the easements to the infrastructure and other utilities. That would be completely a rental, but you've got a little bit of both. And I wish we had a screen and we could pop something up. Because when you see it on a tax map, it's very clear what is a rental community and what is a community with significant HOA lands that surrounds everything, where the tax map parcel just identifies the footprint of the building. And the most majority of the greater parcel then is HOA land in between all the other buildings?
So what's the precedent, Mr. Thomas, from tomorrow to sell every parcel in that subdivision to himself for a dollar? Now he has the entire subdivision sold. He owns the deed to title to every one of those parcels on there.
I think he already does, and is a member of your LLC, Bellatera Group LLC, I believe is you.
Well, right, not the owner, but the developer, I believe is you.
Yeah, so he already is the owner.
But you were just saying that...
But when we say, see, you mean individuals, individuals, not common ownership among all the parcels. So you wouldn't accomplish anything by your just design.
No, he, as an individual, could buy from his LLC every parcel, and then he uses it for a block. It's about $67. He now individually owns every one of those parcels. He builds a house on it, rents out, sells it. What's the precedent for doing that? There's nothing.
Nothing, and I understand the juncture you're at. But I also understand if the project had started that way, the whole thing would have taken a different path. Because the criteria for approving a rental project, forgive me because I feel like I'm treading into a little bit of uncharted water for an assessor, but the approval project, the approval process for a project, where there is going to be a large parcel, multiple-building rental, is a different process.
He's not doing a single parcel.
Because he's already started going left, and now he would like to go right. But if he wanted to go right first, it was a different path to go right.
But he's not combining those into a single parcel. He has not come in for an application to re-subdivide this development. The subdivision stands as it is. It's really just a courtesy. He didn't even need to come by, just on this amount of toll money. He would have never known the difference.
I don't know, I'd never say never. I would have.
But it doesn't matter. It is approved as a subdivision that has two-unit townhouses that straddle the property line, filed that. If he wants to modify that map, he has to go through the process of re-subdividing the subdivision.
That's correct.
At that point, you would have to say no.
No, I wouldn't.
The intent is, this is what it's supposed to be. Because that means, then you're going into the area where you're saying that now you're doing dedicated back-to-back. But right now, as it stands, he doesn't even need to be here. He can just build the houses and run them. There's nothing that says he can't do that.
And as far as assessment is concerned, you're going to assess those properties as individual properties.
Yes, I will.
So where's the burden on taxpayers? He's a taxpayer. He's going to pay your taxes on those properties. So there's no burden on the rest of the town to maintain the roads and whatnot. I mean, that's, he's right. He does not even have to be here.
The precedent is Water View at Willow Point, after 30 some, after 30 some years...
Totally different project. He came in, he changed everything. He made it a rental community. You keep calling it a rental community. Is it not a rental community?
I believe that's what he's...
It's a privately-owned...
It is privately-owned technically by this singular owner. However, this parcel went through a pretty robust rezoning process in several meetings, and it was always pitched as an owner-occupied development. Now, if he wanted a rental throughout that approval process, I think we would end up with a much different product than what we're looking at.
I don't know.
So again, re-subdividing this entire development into a single parcel with all the buildings in it, that's right?
Yeah, he had no intention of doing it.
No. The individual tax...
We have a subdivision as stands. All the parcels are going to be two-town parcels, right? That's it, single development?
Yes.
Okay, so there they are. It's not going to change. They're not going to be four towns?
Right, and then, once he starts to rent them, where is the obligation for him to file the HOA? And where is the obligation for him to sell them?
He has no obligation to file an HOA because it was not made a condition of approval for the rental. Unfortunately, it should have been. Because of a problem of individual homeowners and a joint building, count the wall, one owner puts a new roof on, the other one doesn't. That's a problem from the original approval of this development. We're not here tonight to say, okay, we're going to undo that initial approval and say you must form an HOA. We could strongly advise would be a really good idea for that.
I think you do want to have a...
To avoid this situation. But we're not in a position to say that, because this is not an application for realty subdivision. This is just so incumbent and courtesy, saying, you know, I was thinking of running the property. Okay, fine, there isn't anything in the code that says you can't. The only thing it says in the code about rentals, you can't rent them for less than, what's it, 28 days? That's been a lot on the month recently. We have to rely on the lease agreement that he has with his tenants for his payments for them to maintain the property or whatever it is that the lease agreement has.
I've got a question for you. Do you have these anywhere else?
I have, in Greece, I have all one piece one, like you said.
A similar type situation?
No, 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 it's all one. It's an apartment.
Oh, okay, so it's...
So you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, so you with that?
Yeah.
On the top of the list, right?
Yeah, but that's not my intention. My intention is to be a regular subdivision, with the option to...
But the market is very favorable right now. What, I heard your introduction say that with the market increasing and that you'd rather rent. I'm lost at that.
I think if he's like to have the flexibility, I think Tom has the intent to sell. That's why he went through this process. If he wanted a different project, he wouldn't have built the road to town standards. He wouldn't have put in dedicated sewers and water main and increased his expenses, a lot more than it could have benefited with rental. And he just wants the flexibility, knowing that interest rates are rising, costs are rising, there's demand now. So he wants to build them and hopefully get them occupied and sell as many as possible. But again, I don't think this is ever set up as a rental community. But again, I don't think this is ever set up as a rental community. At the time, you've done, how many, a hundred and twenty lots, just down the road on Phillips and Schlebel and it turned out to be a pretty good development. So I think he's, he's, you know, earns some respect in the town that he's not coming in trying to, you know, pull the wool over the town and say, try to sneak one by you and get the best of both worlds or can you need it too? You know, he is, you know, each parcel will pay their taxes, whether it's Tom or sixty-six individual owners are going to pay their taxes, which is the case for the town, for the roads, for the stormwater, for, for all the town facilities. So, and again, if, if the opportunity arises where he can sell the property, you know, I think he will. Just want to have the flexibility to not, what he certainly didn't want to do is build sixty-six units and not be able to be CFO because, you know, we just assumed we could do one thing or we couldn't. So, again, you know, Tom's willing to, to go the extra step with the HOA to, you know, further prove that it's going to be a quality development for the town. And if the opportunity arises to sell it, I think he will. But again, wanted to discuss this with the town and, and, you know, make sure it works, banking ourselves a little more.
So it's not your intention to do that for year upon year for, I mean, you're waiting to play out the market, right? But, but it's not your intention to be a landlord to these sixty-six lots long-term?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that for sure yet. But, you know, if I could sell them, as long as we can make a decent profit, I will be selling them. And again, I have to have an HOA, but once I start selling them, I have to have an HOA. But, uh...
Are, are, are you going to build all sixty-six at once?
Not, you know, one after the other, but progressively, yes. I would hope to build them all out in the next one to two years.
Instead of building it in sections, there, one month section's done, you start another section.
And it is the section.
And it's, well, this is the section, it's a real issue where you sold one unit, but you haven't sold the other unit, you know, they're under contract. So, you know, do you not build the building at all until both units are under contract? This way you could build it, if somebody wanted to buy a unit, you could build the whole building and lease out one. So it just offers up more flexibility.
And, and my bankers tell me they're expecting interest rates to go up at least another one and a half percent by the end of the year. So, as the interest rates go, go up, you know, buyers slow down. So, my goal is to just, you know, hopefully build one after the next and build a project that all sixty-six are done. I'm guessing it'll take a year to two years.
Well, I, so the one, I, I, I agree with what you guys have just said. I've been saying the same thing for the past few weeks. I don't know what the alternative is. If, Dave, you're right, I use the same scenario. If you build a house, you build five houses. You can't tell a person you can't rent them. That's the right you have.
Well, there's our individual...
Well, that was what we talked about originally, that they stay on individual tax accounts. We agreed to that. In other words, wasn't looking to convert it into a townhouse project, you know what I mean? Under one...
One large parcel.
Correct. The goal wasn't to do that. And I hear Donna, I hear what you're saying, I don't know...
I don't want to suggest either that Waterview had this intention.
I'm sorry, Donna.
I don't want to suggest either that Waterview ever had the intention of not carrying through with what their plans are. So what we're seeing is sometimes, as time goes by, plans will change, right? So, they had set it up as individual ownership, they left the HOA off of it, and they could have sold them, but they had individual lots, right? And then, then through conversations with my officers, she said, pick, pick what you're doing. Are you, are you renting or are you selling? And they wanted to have that flexibility back and forth. I don't think they ever foresaw, they were standing here at the beginning of their project, much like you are today, I don't think that they ever foresaw that thirty years later, they would still be renting them. They never, I don't, I can't speak for them, I wasn't hearing that thirty years ago. But it turned out thirty years later, they're still right where they never hoped to be.
Yeah, that, that, that plays an issue from the beginning, I can tell you that. There were three different developers in there and that whole process in there. And one wasn't any better than the next. So, as a result of that, the way that thing came down, there's no way in hell you would have moved in there and bought a place. So, the intent was to sell. Davies, Davies, that's the guy that built that goofy looking thing in there, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Cliff Davies, I can...
A three-story, yeah.
I remember that, I even remember breakfast this morning.
He's a divorcee.
But it turned out to be a nightmare that building. And, you know, they were for sale, these were like the ultimate. Nobody ever bought anything in there. And that's why, there's nothing they can do with that, that thing was falling apart. That's why they had three different developers in that project. It just went the hell out of hand cart over there. I think, I think what we're dealing with here, I think what we're dealing with here is a little bit more reputable situation than what that one was. Again, that's some of the history of that over there.
Yeah, I'm not comparing, I'm not comparing the reputations, please don't take offense.
Oh, yeah.
You just, you, you come across these things and sometimes you go, whoa, wait a minute, what compels that forward in the direction in which it was intended originally? What compels it forward in that direction?
See, the way I look at it, it's an actual sixty-six lot subdivision. You know, you overhand-laid it by a woman there and there's no restriction that you can't lease it if it's your property. And, and, you know, a dedicated road, you know, you pay taxes, just like any other homeowner.
I know. I think too, when you came in originally on this, one of the stipulations was that it would be duplexes and not duplexes. And I think I used the scenario of rubber pressing. The duplexes over there and how they sold like hotcakes over there, they went, they were used straight away. Still a really nice project. You build four units, you build a four-unit. I buy this one, you buy that one. What do we do with these? Nobody wants them, but you got to do them all. So these end up being rentals. And that's what happened over there. And that's why I was dedicating, remember at the meeting when you guys came in? I just, no way, wanted to see a duplex. And we all agreed, built, you know, duplexes and it worked out. I, I, I don't, I'm not seeing the, I'm not seeing the same issues with that, personally.
You only save care, I would want to see us an HOA.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
That's it, other than that, everything stays the same.
Yeah.
He sells them, he sells them, or not to rent them, he rents them. He's paying the taxes on them, so...
So what, what would be the, what would be the issue with it? If, if we go along with this like this, that, like we're just talking?
I just don't want to see many years from now where no one anticipated or thought about it at this particular moment in time. That if that doesn't happen, the town would end up with a rental community with dedicated roads and you don't have any of those, there's reasons for that. Some of those are outside my parameters, we'll be able to explain to you this evening. But it doesn't look like a rental community. And if it ends up staying that way, through no intention of their plans at the moment, which we've seen before, right? Then that, that's going to become a problem.
I don't see a problem.
Well, then if the developer, the rental property would very much like to have the roads dedicated and filed by the town and their infrastructure purchased by the town and maintained. That's what you have, that's what you would have.
These are...
They do all the units.
Be clear, Tom pays for the infrastructure to be built, the town takes ownership of it.
That's what I mean. When the town, you were dedicated to the town. And you've built it to certain standards, so then you would be able to do that. I understand, yes.
And then, you know, the individual tax lots would be paying for the infrastructure.
Right.
Or it'll give the town money.
It goes into the whole pool.
Right. By the way, he can't say no to anybody.
That's right. He's a hundred percent right when he says he doesn't have to be here, okay? So, if, if he were to accommodate us and do the HOA, I think that's a major plus. And whether it's owned or rented or whatever, it's going to be maintained. Taxes are going to be the same as the individually owned units and they're going to be individually. So I, I don't see a problem with this whatsoever.
So what mechanism do you propose to, to require the HOA?
Well, right now, in Trent, we're planning, we're, we're looking at the project.
Yeah.
He had before us a request for site plan modifications to allow rental of townhouses. The approval of this project never had a stipulation of sale or rental. So, just requesting site plan modification, we're actually not modifying anything. So we have no action to take.
Yes, there was no physical modification, but the project as originally proposed was owner occupied. That's what was said when the rezoning was approved.
None of the approvals for the subdivision stipulate owner occupied, criminal. There is nothing in the record that says it must be owner occupied. So we are not modifying the plan. This is a subdivision that came in and was approved as a subdivision. Right now, we are not seeing a request to re-subdivide the entire parcel. That's not what's before us. That's speculation about what they have to next week. They'll have to find next week, but it doesn't really matter, okay?
But as someone who's going to have to deal with the implications of this situation?
Well, there is, there is many implications on it. Because these are all individual parcels. There is nothing that we are modifying. There is nothing that was ever approved by ourselves. There was nothing, as far as I saw in the minutes for the town board, that said approval subject to sale only. They didn't say that in any resolution.
No, it was not a petition, but it was...
Because he can't, he can't say that. Well, it was asked, that's nice. That doesn't have any, that doesn't have any standing. You have, you have these discussions about, okay, are you telling me that when I go out rentals, the town lets me use my own one? And you said you can't fix that vision. This, if a subdivision was filed and an easement signet was filed, it is individual lots that have two unit townhouses that straddle a property law. Nothing for us to modify, there's no action for us to take. None whatsoever. It's appreciated that, you know, Mr. Towns is going to put an HOA to cover the issue of shared maintenance of these, and the next buildings. And it's, it's nicely doing that, but what grounds do we have at this point to modify, to require them?
Initially, he wouldn't need an HOA no matter what, if he's going to rent them. You know, either way, we're needed.
We don't have any grounds to...
But if, if we can get him to agree, and that would be just for protection so the town didn't get calls from applicants later who rent them. Is to agree to form an HOA on that site. Once you start selling any units in there, something like that, I think that would...
I would be appreciative of that. I would want that anyways, you know, just for the protection of potential buyers.
But as long as he's maintaining them himself, he doesn't need anything.
Right.
Well, this is what, what we're all saying, the same thing, is what we've been saying from right on. I don't like comparing it to Willow Point, that was a clustered mess.
That project, that project is done in overall. Neither of those projects are before the board at this point in time. We're happy with healing those, we're not looking back in time to change anything. We are looking at the project that the board had given that manages requesting modification for rental instead of sales. And it's a modification that was not applicable because there was never a condition...
See, when, when that started, Oriole's were the original, Oriole and... We're the ones that started that project. And the intent then, they started at the road there, remember, do you remember? Yes, sir. And see, that started over there to be for sale units.
Yeah.
Well, they sold a couple of them, you know, just to get it going. Didn't take them long to go bust, they went belly up on that project right away. Then, then Cliffy, he took that over. And then he had it, he messed it up even deeper. And then Mark Four came in and completed the project and that turned it into a total ripper at that point.
But the only modification, if he came in and said, I modify my plan to be a rental community, going to do it under one, one townhouse.
Correct.
That's a modification.
That's a...
We're not doing it, we're not doing it. And he's right, there's, there's actually no action we can take.
Wow.
And I'm a neighbor of that project, by the way. I live four doors away from it, so, you know...
I assure you, these are going to be very high-end, very classy units.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm, yeah, I would agree. Rentals on that are going to be range, you know, for...
Well, rentals for that type of unit are between fifteen hundred and two thousand a month.
You wouldn't be able to rent it for two fifteen hundred. You wouldn't be able, am I right?
My, my guess is...
Two grand?
Eighteen hundred to two thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. Get one up, they got to move in.
Okay.
Getting tired of mowing lawn. All right, where are we going here? We're just...
I think right now, I'm in a...
In agreement with what he's proposing to do and request it. You can't even make that a legal thing, to, to form homeowners association. But I think in good faith, with the, with his reputation, I think he would do it. He wants the project to work too.
Well, we can ask him to put it on the record that he agrees to put an HOA in this subdivision. Doesn't have to be a stipulation.
That's weird.
Just add it on the record.
That he's, that he's agreeing to, yeah, that's a good idea. If the apple is agreed with any sale of units that is for an HOA. No. All right, I don't know what else we can do, but...
I would just want to clarify, I only said any sale, any, any sale except for myself or... In other words, any sale to somebody except myself. In other words, could everyone be sold to me?
Yeah, you know what I mean, once, once, outside of you, once they become people moving in other than yourself, yeah. For sale, yeah, that would, yeah. Yeah, but as long as you're owning them, and if you got them for a couple of years, call them. Whenever you got it up, you're going to take care of the lawn and everything yourself. That's all your, they're all your yards. It's the only way I can stand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm...
Sorry, to address your concern as it relates to that other development of commitment not to consolidate it to assume tax parcel, maintain it as separate individual tax parcels.
They already are that.
But they are, but they're just a commitment somewhat to...
Well, if, if, if he wanted to do that, he would have to come back to this board to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And which would be denied.
Okay, all right. Was there, anybody in comments, you guys?
No, she didn't do nothing.
That's about where it is, really. All right, this was second.
Okay, well, thank you.